This is the April 13, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call of the members, Councilor Rego.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino is absent. Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas. Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowosowski. Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Council Vice President Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers is absent. A quorum is present.
Obviously, I'm sitting in Councilor Powers' seat tonight due to the death of his son, John. So I would ask for a moment of silence for John E. Powers, please. And of course, we send our condolences to the Powers family. Thank you.
Approval of the journals of the meetings held on March 16 and March 23, 2015.
All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number one, Councilor Guanasso will be recognized as the longest-serving city councilor in the history of the city of Revere. As of tonight, Arthur Guanasso has served on the Revere City Council and has represented the citizens of Ward 3 for a total of 29 years, 3 months, and 13 days. During his terms in office, Councilor Guanasso served as president of the Revere City Council in 1993 and 2006. He has also served as vice president and chairman of the Appointments Subcommittee for several terms. Councilor Guanasso was first chosen by the residents of Ward 3 during the November 5, 1985 election, beating out incumbent Dick Smith by a margin of 359 votes, 1,616 to 1,257 votes. Councilor Guanasso has also served on the city council almost continuously. In 2002, he took a shot at the councillor-at-large seat but lost, ending his streak. However, in 2004, Councilor Guanasso was elected once again by the residents of Ward 3 and has since served in that capacity. As of April 2, 2015, Councilor Guanasso became the longest-serving city councilor in the history of the city of Revere, surpassing the namesake of the City Council chamber, City Councilor Joseph A. Delgrasso, who at his death on April 1, 2001, represented the citizens of Revere for a total of 29 years, 3 months, and 1 day. To commemorate this legislative milestone, the city of Revere has honored Councilor Guanasso with a portrait to be permanently affixed in the City Council chambers alongside city councillors Joseph A. Delgrasso and George V. Colaula. Congratulations, Arthur.
It's very brief, but it spells out some of the things I'd like to say, and sometimes you forget to say the most important things. But in everybody's life in politics, everybody has to realize they have a family, and with this family life, it means so much to me. And here are the byproducts of my family. My two daughters have wonderful children. They're here to address with me tonight. And my oldest grandson, Travis, is not able to meet with us tonight. He's away studying. So I would like to read this and hopefully it gains some of the favor of some of you who've worked so hard. "I could never have imagined when I started this journey, over 30 years ago, that I would be standing here, still serving in city government, a city I love. Let me just share a little history from the 30 years ago and beyond. I was a young man who was always interested in politics. I would read about how good, how they could change things, how they didn't work for our city and the country and make them better. Then I heard about a senator from Massachusetts, John F. Kennedy. That was 55 years ago, thinking of running for president of the United States. And I thought to myself, here's someone I know can make a difference. So I called his campaign headquarters and worked on his behalf in his campaign. As we all know, he won the election. And that's when I knew I also wanted to make a difference, right in my own backyard, the beautiful city of Revere. I've been privileged to work with some of the great mayors of our city, George Colaula, Bill Reinstein, Bob Haas, Tom Ambrosino, and our current mayor, Dan Rizzo. For many years, Revere had to prove what a great city we are. Yes, there were times when things didn't go well, but we always rebounded and made things better. Let's look at our city today. Some of the best schools in the state, our beach is second to none. We've had developers wanting to come to our community and be part of the great growth that's existing today. Residents who left our city are coming back to enjoy living on the oceanfront. I've lived in Ward 3 for over 50 years and love it. Just take a look at our new sidewalks and roads. Yes, the winter has caused a lot of damage, but yes, Revere will again make it better. It has been an honor to serve with so many of my colleagues. Their hearts, as mine, are about keeping Revere going in the right direction. I want to thank everyone who's been part of this tribute, namely Ashley Melnick, city clerk. And when she told me about this, she floored me. It's one of those things that I remember with heartfelt thanks and will never forget. In closing, I want to thank my family for always supporting me on this journey, for without them it would not have been possible. May God bless the city of Revere. Thank you very much." Can you guys come up? Come on, Albie, Albie, Jackie, come on. Yes, please. No, 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 you, you're my family. You've been there from the day one. Come on up, come on up. Please, come up. I told you I had a beautiful family. Thank you. Come on in.
Don't want to block anyone. Let out the other side.
Tell us when you're ready, Al.
Everybody look right here.
I'm good. And I really appreciate the picture being placed upon the City Hall walls. This chamber means an awful lot to me. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for being here. Oh, my pleasure. This chamber means an awful lot to me. Thank you. Congratulations, girlfriend. Oh, my pleasure. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, report of the Public Works Subcommittee.
Chairman Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Works Subcommittee met tonight, and it was our first meeting to develop a new plan for, believe it or not, snow removal, even though it's 65 degrees out today. But I did notice some snow still around the city, so I know it's still in our sights. But we did discuss developing a plan regarding the way we're going to hire private contractors, talk about new equipment that the Public Works needs, manpower, and we talked about developing different ordinance changes that we're going to work with the chief, the two chiefs, and the mayor's office, and of course, us and the people in the city of Revere to talk about what's good for public safety during a storm. It's not all about parking in front of your house or saving parking spaces. So we did receive $117,000 from the state for some pothole repairs. Part of that is being used, as a matter of fact, this week, private contractors are out filling potholes, and they're not doing it everywhere all over the city. The superintendent picked the worst particular areas, specifically around schools. They're working their way to the eastern part of the city. So I just ask everybody to please be patient. They're going to get to everybody. It's not going to be tomorrow, and it probably won't be next week, but over the next month or so, you will see your potholes repaired. Some major trenches were repaired, and I can mention down in my area on Beach Street, there was one that was the full length, width of the street, and the Public Works Department themselves fixed those potholes, and we put out some cones to let people know that there was an issue down there. So just please be patient. Some of the new ordinances may, and I'm not saying anything is cut in stone, may include one-sided parking during snowstorms, which side, we don't know. It may be odd-year, even year. Again, we don't know. It's just something we're talking about. We're talking about teaching, believe it or not, the private contractors how to plow, you know, where to push the snow, when to push it in closer to the curb, and everybody has to be a part of this, and we're making it a team. It's only the initial meeting we had today over the summer, and I'd say hopefully into July, we can come up with some definite ordinance changes. Some of the changes may include one-way streets, and that we were talking about during the wintertime. I know Boston did it immediately. We couldn't, for many, many reasons, especially dealing with eight feet of snow, actually nine feet of snow. So we are talking about some streets that may be permanently made into one-ways. We're not sure which way yet. We're not even sure which street yet. We're working with the ward councils, we're working with the councils at large, working with the fight department and police department and Public Works to determine that over the next few months. And hopefully, a lot of these ordinances will be in place before next winter, and people may have to find places to find parking spaces. Excuse me. We're working, hopefully, to work with some of our commercial property owners that have large parking spaces, parking lots, to let us use those lots during the snowstorm like we did with Suffolk Downs a couple of years ago, and then the city went in and plowed out the people that parked there. So that was one of the deals that were made. So we're working on it. Please be patient, and hopefully, next month, we'll be talking a little more about this, and then hopefully in June, we can finalize something, vote on something in July, then have our public hearings in August and September, and pass the ordinances on or about October 1st. So that's our list, that's our target dates. Again, nothing is cast in stone, but be patient with us. We know a lot of people were patient during the year. Some people weren't, but we understand. But we're dealing with public safety. That's our number-one priority, is public safety. So that's our report for now, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you and your committee for getting this kicked off. I apologize for not being able to make that meeting today. I had another commitment. However, I am certainly in favor of a uniform plowing system for the hired contractors. Instead of going up the middle of the street, I think we have to have a better system. And so we're all on the same page with that. But again, I want to thank you and your committee for moving forward with this, and I think we'll have a good plan by the time the snow hits us again. Thank you very much.
Calendar item number three, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Chairman Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, earlier today, the Ways and Means Subcommittee met with two items. The first was a $2 million bond authorization for Harry Delarussa Stadium, and we were joined by Director of Finance, George Anzoni, and City Planner, Frank Strinji. Unfortunately, the mayor was unable to attend, but we did discuss the issue of the Harry Delarussa Stadium and the additional $2 million that is needed to complete the stadium. I think in our conversations, there seems to still be some misunderstanding about some bond language, some standard bond language that is in pretty much any bond that includes any money that we get from the state. Unfortunately, the project is going to cost approximately $2 million more, even though we were, as I said during that meeting, told that it would cost between $4 and $5 million and that the state would be covering approximately half of that. We are now going to be paying $4.8 million, and the state will be contributing $2.7. And I do want to add that we were told originally that this bond would not be, the full amount of the bond would not be needed, and that we wouldn't need to spend every nickel. So with that, we found that last August, we were looking at a $7.5 million project, and we are going to need to complete this. I think I agree with all of my colleagues that we need to finish this project. We can't leave it 80% done. We can't not bond $2 million. With that said, we are making the decision to bond $2 million, and it will have significant impacts on what we can bond in the future, and it will have an impact on our operating budget in our debt service line item. And I want everyone to go into the vote tonight on this bond authorization, knowing that there are other projects that we need to be thinking about, and we need to be thinking about the Garfield School. We need to be thinking about St. Mary's Ballfields, which are $1 million over budget already. We need to be thinking about the renovation of the DPW that's needed, and, you know, a new youth center that we need, and I would add the City Hall renovations that need to happen. All of those issues are part of this conversation, because $2 million being spent on the stadium means that there are $2 million less to spend on other projects. So with that, the committee did vote out this favorably, and I look forward to having, as we get more information about the '16 budget, that we'll have some more understanding of what this means for the future. But we did vote this out to a full vote of the council tonight, and with that, I will call for a roll call on the $2 million bond.
Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $2 million for the purpose of paying additional cost of remodeling, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to Harry Delarussa Stadium? Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Vice President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers is absent. The bond has been approved. Calendar item number four, report of the Appointments Subcommittee.
Chairman Guanasso, the longest-serving city councilor in Revere's history.
Mr. President. Mr. President, earlier this afternoon, the Appointments Subcommittee met, and we had one item on the agenda. It was the appointment of Procopio Enterprises, Inc., 20 Main Street, Saguas, as a licensed drain layer. That was voted out unanimously, and I ask the City Council to do the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Shall the City Council confirm the drain layer appointment for Procopio Enterprises, Inc.? Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito is absent. Councilor Nowosowski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Council Vice President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers is absent. The appointment has been confirmed. In accordance with Rule 23 of the City Council Rules of Order, the following motion is being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number five.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I think that since that's President Powers' motion, that we'll leave that in committee. Thank you.
Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to certificates of recognition to be awarded on April 27, 2015, to the Revere Texans for winning the U8 championships. Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to a transfer request, well, relative to the Woods Hole Group in the amount of $6,910.
Ways and Means.
Mr. President, whereas it's under $10,000, can't we vote on it this evening?
I think it's a $5,000 figure, isn't it?
Is it $5,000, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Now, it's got to go to Ways and Means.
Okay.
Now, calendar items number eight through 20 are all relative to appointments.
Appointments Subcommittee.
Mr. President, if I may.
Councilor Nowosowski.
Just, again, I've kind of made a pet of mind to check people's insurance.
I like that.
And I've noticed that several of these people do not have up-to-date insurance information, and one does not have any information. So I would like for the clerk to notify the Superintendent of Public Works that Sasso and Sons Construction has no insurance information. Marquezzi's insurance expired 4/1. There's no dates on CRL Incorporated, and the insurance for GeoSearch expires on 4/18. So if we can notify them to get us up-to-date insurance.
Well, I thank you for that information, Counselor, and I'm sure that the clerk will not issue any licenses until she has up-to-date insurance information in hand. Thank you.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilors Janino and Rego that the City Council, along with the mayor's office, work together with the Revere Police Department to develop a task force and a comprehensive assessment regarding the increasing number of overdoses, particularly opiate-related, that have, I'm sorry, opiate-related that have taken place in Revere. Opiate overdoses have been on the rise nationally over the past few years, and Revere needs a plan to take on the growing numbers.
Councilor Janino.
Thank you. This is an issue that, you know, we're not only facing alone in Revere, but the whole state is seeing these increases, and I think that since it's something that directly affects a lot of people in our community, you know, whether directly or indirectly, we need a solution, and we need something to come up with so we can say we do have a plan and we are aware that it is an issue instead of kind of sweeping it under the rug. And I know that we have a lot of people in the Revere Police Department that are willing to help educate the community and work on a solution to really getting this issue solved and getting a grip on it. And I think Councilor Rego has already spoke with some people as well as I have, so I look forward to talking about it more in committee. I'm hoping that it goes to public safety, but I think my co-counselor colleague has some comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janino. Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, the opiate addiction issues that we're facing, and it's not just the city, but the state and actually the entire nation, to give people a little bit of context, the governor, Governor Baker, has committed to tackling this challenge, and he's put together a working group of folks who are coming up with some solutions on a statewide level, and we do have some folks from Revere who are on that. And I think that it's important for us on a local level to really start to have this conversation. I know it's not an issue that people necessarily want to talk about. It's not a happy issue, but it is something that is very important to public safety. It's very important to the future of the city, and I know that there are people doing a lot of good work. Kim Hanton is out there every day doing a lot of good work on the ground, and I think it's time for us to start having these discussions on a higher level and start to really be ready for whatever recommendations come out of the governor's opiate working group, that there will probably be some money available for innovative solutions to this issue. And the city should not lose out on the ability to present some of those innovative ideas. I know that people have some great ideas in the city already, and we can make a dent on this issue. It's just a matter of getting the right people in the room and having a conversation. And just to put it in people's minds, in the last year, the state has seen
safety.
Calendar item number 22, Motion Presented by Counselor Novoselsky, that the mayor request Mass DOT to repave the intersection of North Shore Road and Beach Street.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, a lot of folks travel that route to Revere Beach, going home to the North Shore, and that intersection of North Shore Road and Beach Street at Peter's Superbeef is probably one of the worst intersections. They're not just a trench or a pothole. It's one of the worst intersections in the city, and it is part of the state road, so I'm asking that we ask Mass DOT to put it on their calendar to repave that intersection. I know the city is doing all of Beach Street from the edge of North Shore Road out to VFW Parkway. So hopefully, this all can tie in together, and we'll get a decent street. But I do want to state and thank Mass DOT District 4 Highway Group that went around today and did Old North Shore Road, which is from Revere Beach Parkway down to Butler Circle, and they did a wonderful job, and I thank those guys for their hard work. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number 23, Motion Presented by Counselors Arigo and Powers, that the mayor request the traffic commission at its next regular meeting to consider the installation of a handicap sign at 31 Wadsworth Ave.
Counselor Arigo.
Speaks for itself.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Late communication from the mayor requesting a public hearing for Mass D E P C Y 2015 for CWSRF Loan Number 3955 in the amount of $250,000.
Audit to a public hearing.
Communication from the Veteran Services Director relative to a memorial sign to be installed on the corner of Park Avenue and Cambridge Street in honor of John Richard
Move the question. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. This council will stand adjourned until April 27.